All right, well, we're 10 minutes after, sorry. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting and on the July 19th. We have our first two orders of business are our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have Pastor Juan Humes, one of my favorite pastors in the city of Casa Grande, from Kingdom Living Ministry. And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to ask everybody if we would be so kind as just to bow your heads and close your eyes and open your hearts and just allow the presence of God to fill us in this place tonight. Thank you, Lord. Heavenly Father, we recognize that you are the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end of all things, Lord. We come to you tonight to pray for our city leaders, Father. We pray that you give them, as you have given them the responsibility to watch and guide over us and this city called Casa Grande. Lord, we just, Lord, just as you called the prophet Ezekiel to come and be the watchman on the tower for your people, we ask you now, no, we pray, we plead, Father, that you touch our city leaders to be the godly watchmen and godly watchwomen to watch over your creation called Casa Grande. Lord, we pray, just as you have, just as you transform Ezekiel to be the watchman for your people, we pray that you will ignite a fire in each one of our leaders and all the various support auxiliaries in our cities. Let them burn so bright that everyone, all, will see your light burning in Casa Grande. We pray that you will, we pray for all of the individuals to support them, Father. We pray that you will be, allow them to be a blessing for each individual, each family, each, each city, each part of the community, Father. They will be a blessing to each area of our city, Lord. And that, Father, whether they're young or old, poor or rich, it makes no difference that we will be a better city because of your presence in it. Lord, we pray that they will be pleasing in your sight. And we ask this now in your precious Son, Jesus' name, knowing and believing according to Mark 11:22, 23, and 24, what Jesus told his disciples, "Have faith in God; for if you do, you can tell the mountains should be cast into the sea." If you pray, believe, and have no doubt, then what you pray for, Lord, your word tells us, it shall be done. So according to your word, this thing is done, is done, is done, and the blessings are coming, coming, coming. In Jesus' name we pray. Yes, in Jesus' name we pray, in Jesus mighty and masterless name we pray. Let everyone that loves the Lord just say amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bob, thank you, pastor. I am on fire, man. I am on fire. Thank you. Thank you, Juan. Always inspired after his sermon. I feel like I've just been to the sermon. I feel it. All right, let the roll call show that all council members are present.
So noted.
Minutes?
The minutes, there we have the city council regular meeting minute from July 6th that I move approval for and a meeting, special meeting from July 6th, 2021, that I consider or want to approve also. The, the others, we want to take, we want to go ahead and take these for the record. The city approving the Arts and Humanities Commission minutes of May 11th, 2021. Consider approving the Arts and Humanities Commission minutes of June 1st, 2021. Consider approving the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of June 3rd, 2021. And that is it. There's a lot of minutes.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I get, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved as presented. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Absolutely.
Claims against the city? D, item D?
I move to accept and pay the claims dated June 30th to July 13th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain, Mayor.
All right. Note, Ms. Fitzgibbons abstain. Next is our meeting agenda approval. Does anyone have any changes? Staff? Larry?
We have no dispute.
Anyone on the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it is presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved as presented. We have no special presentations, so we'll go right to consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who needs to or would like to pull or change, pull anything off the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item H, and this is a call to the public. So anyone who would like to approach the lectern and address the council, this is your opportunity. If there is anyone who does desire to do that, please state your name, your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. We have also a requirement that we cannot discuss the item because it's not agendized, but we can direct staff to follow up and get back with you. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the floor and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item K. K1, considering resolution number 5322. Mr. Scott?
Mayor McFarland, members, the council tonight is planning to be the last step in a process that's gone on over the last number of months involving two study sessions. And so tonight, this item and the next one is related. Staff is recommending that you approve a resolution approving the sale, execution, and delivery of excise tax revenue obligations in an amount not to exceed $65 million to finance the unfunded actuarial liability of the city's police and fire department, Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Tier 1 and 2 plans, and authorize the execution of all necessary associated documents and declare an emergency. As we've explained in the past, this essentially is taking the current unfunded actuarial liability that exists in both of our plans upon which we're making contributions as an employer today and refinancing that outside of the pension program, taking a debt that we're financing right now at about a little over 7% and refinancing it independently at hopefully something under 3%. And what that will do upon delivery of the documents, the expectation is that it will make us 100% funded in both of our plans. And remember that all of our plans are separate, the 250-odd plans of public safety retirement. So our police department plan and our fire department plans are separate. And so what that will allow us to do is take our rate that we pay as an employer for all of those employees who are in the plan, in the police and fire departments, and lower that paying just the, what we call the normal cost of the plan. Now, against potential things happening, the next item speaks to the issue of creating a contingency reserve program or plan so that, and that is being the projection or the recommendation this evening is to fund that with unrestricted city fund balance cash. And that will guard against variations in actuarial change or changes in the market. And we'll see how that, how that goes. A number of documents were attached to the request for council action this evening for your information and for the information of our public. There are several things that are, that are changing and will be changing until the very end. One is the total dollar amount of the issuance. We're asking for your authority up to $65 million, and, and you'll notice in some of the other documents, it's around 63 million. We'll be getting that final number from public safety retirement as we get right down to the end. The other thing that's changing is a preliminary offering statement. And this is the offering statement that, that will be issued to the potential purchasers. And all of that is, is going through changes as we, even as we speak. And so the information that's provided to you on that in the pack of this evening is preliminary and it's in draft format, and it's even changing as we talk. So that is where we are this evening. We're very pleased to be able to bring this to you for your action. Right now, I'd like to call on Nick Dodd from Piper Sandler, and he's going to come up, run through just a couple of slides by way of reminding and answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, thank you, Scott, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Nick Dodd with Piper Sandler. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening. We have a brief presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. So just a couple of things that Scott touched on, specific to the contingency reserve fund and the policy that is before the council this evening. This is the estimate of the sizing of the contingency reserve fund, the different components for the police department and the fire department, and the two components within that, the actuarial, which is the changes in the actuarial assumptions that are made, and also it's partially sized to factor in some potential investment losses in the future. And the sum of those, as you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, is 5.2 million. That's consistent with the presentation we shared with the council six weeks ago. So this was just intended to be a refresher. Actually, most of these slides are, are really just a refresher. Moving on to the bond issue and the sizing of the bond issue, as Mr. Barber noted, current estimates are 63.4 million. A couple of things I would note is we've assumed a 2.54% interest rate here. I think if we were to price today, we would be below that. And, and you'll see on the calendar at the end of, the end of the presentation, our expectation is we're hoping to get into the market within the next three weeks. And when I say get in the market, we would lock the interest rate at that time. Couple of other things I'd note with regards to the bond issue. The structure of the bond issue does follow a similar pattern as your existing liability with PSPRS with a couple notable exceptions. It's, it's roughly between 1.7 and $2 million less per year, and it also pays off three years earlier. So your current liability with PSPRS would pay off in 2039. This, the proposed structure would in fact have the bonds paid off in 2036. As noted, it would take you to fully funded status, and the reserve fund or the contingency reserve is, the city staff has recommended not bond funding that, but in fact taking some of your existing cash reserves, creating a separate fund and managing it, you know, with your own resources internally. If, if the numbers shown before you, which we feel are conservative, were to, you know, get locked in when we priced the bonds, you would save over the next roughly 15 years almost $45 million. And in today's dollars, that's roughly $34 million in, we call it present value. And when you think about that as a percent of the liability, it's over 55%. So it's, it's, it's very significant dollars saved for the city. This is really just the table that backs up the graph. If anybody was interested in, in the actual numbers, you would see this here. You can see the savings, which is the 1.7 to $2 million. You can see the prepayment of the debt occurring three years prior to the projected PSPRS existing schedule, and there's the $45 million on a future basis and the 34.5 on a, on a present value basis. Finally, I'm happy to report we're on schedule. We're here this evening, and over the next few weeks, should council approve this, we would expect a couple of key events to occur. We expect to hear back from Standard Empores and Fitch Ratings next week. We, we went through, had a great presentation. Staff did a really nice job, and the feedback was very positive, so we expect to hear from them. They would rate these bonds and also kind of re-rate the city. And, and we'll finalize the preliminary official statement, which Mr. Barber mentioned is in your packet. That's what investors use to look, you know, to make an informed decision with regards to whether they would like to invest in the bonds. And then the current plan has us pricing the bonds the week of August 9th. That's when we lock in the rates. And once that occurs, you then transferred the risk to the investors, and we would take two or three weeks and look to close right around September 1st. So I think this is consistent with what we shared with, with you six weeks ago, and we've been moving along kind of right on, on plan. So happy to answer any other questions or turn it back to staff.
And Nick, on, on this, so you're pretty confident that we're going to lock in at a pretty good rate?
I feel really good today. Obviously, just to give you some perspective.
Are you a politician?
Yeah. Just to give you some perspective, interest rates have come down about, the 10-year treasury is the best gauge. It's, it's come down about 30 basis points in the last two weeks, two and a half weeks. That's, that's really good for you guys.
Can we put it out tomorrow?
And, you know, obviously, if you saw the stock market today, really kind of took a, you know, took a kick in the shorts there and was down a lot. And so that's obviously good for bonds typically when people come out of equities, they go into something safer and into bonds. And so we felt like the 254 was conservative six weeks ago. The markets improved, so I'm, I'm trying to hedge my bets, but I think we're in a pretty good position, Mr. Mayor.
So it'll be somewhere between the 65 million and 64, 63, somewhere in that range, right? Whatever, whatever at the time when we lock in with, with PSPRS, right, they'll tell us what we owe them and then?
Correct. And actually, today, there was some dialogue. Obviously, PSPRS has crossed over their fiscal year, which was June 30th.
Right.
So we're having some dialogue about trying to get just a really fine, you know, kind of handle on exactly what the liability was.
Usually, we find out about now, right? It's about this time of year?
It's typically around September.
Okay.
They understand we're getting ready to price bonds, so we're hoping they're going to work with us. And, and really, the issue there is they had a great year last year. Their investment return was over 20%. And so obviously, that means your liability could have potentially come down a little bit. And so we just want to make sure we understand that as we final, you know, do the final sizing of the bonds.
All right, well, this, this is the, this is the best thing we could do. I mean, we need to get out from underneath this mountain, and we can save $45 million for the taxpayers in the future. That is the right thing to do. So I'm, I'm all in support of this. Does anyone else have any other comments? I know, we've talked about this ad nauseam, so.
Agree.
Matt?
I've got my standard comment. We're required by state statute to participate in this program. We have not managed this program ourselves. This is one way.
Nothing to do with this.
This is one way we can take our destiny back some, and I appreciate all the work you guys have done on it. And just, you know, I was talking to Larry and everyone about it, and it's simple term. I look at you, we owe the money, we're refinancing, it's like refinancing your house.
Yep.
At a better rate, you know, just so people understand. We already owe the money, we're not taking on any new debt. And a ridiculously better rate. And, and that savings over the next 10, 15 years is amazing. That will make a big difference to the city.
To Matt's point, we, we didn't have anything to do with the debt. We have everything to do with trying to manage it. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you. That's always my point I like to make.
Well, well said.
But they do have a new board at the state level, so obviously, last year, well, if they didn't do good last year, then they really shouldn't be there. But, yeah, they had a great year.
20% return, so.
So, yeah.
Anybody other, other comments? Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Scott. All right, so I'll consider a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5322. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement, a trust agreement, a continuing disclosure certificate, an obligation purchase agreement, and forms, and forms of related obligation documents, approving a preliminary official statement, approving the sale, execution, and delivery if not to exceed 65 million of the city's excise tax revenue obligations, taxable series 2021, evidencing a proportionate interest of the owners thereof in agreement between the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, and a trustee issuance of post issuance compliance procedures and adopting written continuing disclosure compliance procedures and authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution 5322 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the next item is item K2, and I think to your point, Scott, I think this involves the contingency plan.
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, as I've already mentioned, this evening is part of the, the financing, refinancing of the debt includes creating a contingency reserve fund as a hedge against the possibility of changes in both the actuarial sciences applied to this and also variations in the market conditions. So before you for approval this evening is the policy that we worked together to create. We've worked, our finance director has made the necessary inquiries in relationship to the, the fine points of creating these, these earmarked funds. And of course, the budgetary authority has already been approved by council for the action that you've already taken, as well as the five-point, approximately 5.2 million that's going to be of unrestricted fund balance that's going to be used to fund these. So with that, I'll answer your questions.
Anyone have any questions of Scott? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please.
A resolution.
A resolution, I'm sorry, resolution. I'm looking at the wrong one.
Resolution number 5323. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the adoption of the city of Casa Grande Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, police and fire department plans, contingency reserve policy, and authorizing the execution of the policy and all actions necessary to implement the policy.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5323 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
I just, before I give my vote, I just wanted to thank Scott. Thank you also to Nick Dodd and your company. You guys have done a lot of work on this, and it's very much appreciated. It's been five years of my existence in this council trying to deal with this, so it's a long time coming, and I'm glad to see it finally come to fruition. So thank you both for, and your companies and your staff, Scott, for all the work that you all have done. Yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is item K3, which is consider approval of ordinance number 1397.03.09.
Staff recommend, mayor and council, staff recommends that mayor and council amend the city's procurement code to provide greater flexibility for small, under 5,000 purchases, and to provide council the ability to speed up the procurement of capital projects by allowing for those items adopted by council to be approved by resolution instead of ordinance. The city's procurement code was adopted in 2007 and has not been amended during the past 14 years. While staff anticipates beginning the process of working with council to overhaul and update many of the provisions of the code during the next year, in order to immediately provide more needed flexibility in the procurement standards, staff is proposing two relatively minor changes to the procurement code to help streamline purchases and projects during the next fiscal year. The first proposed change would be to increase the threshold where no formal bids or quotes are required from the current amount of $1,500 to $4,999. The second proposed change is to amend the code to specifically allow the mayor and council to determine whether certain projects over 5,000, 50,000 could be adopted by resolution instead of by ordinance. The proposal would require, would still require the mayor and council to approve those items which would be exempted by ordinance in order to ensure compliance with the city charter, but would provide the city with the ability to move forward the projects, such as the city's capital improvement projects, much more quickly. Under the current code, each project over 50,000 requires two readings of an ordinance as well as a 30-day cure period, which adds between 45 and 50 days to these projects on average. This amendment would let council adopt a list of projects by ordinance at the beginning of a fiscal year that would be eligible to have council approve the future bid or proposal by resolution instead of ordinance. As a result of the, as a result, these projects would still come before mayor and council once the bid or proposal is ready to proceed, but the council would approve it and allow the project to move forward significantly, more efficiently, which has been a focus area for mayor and council. Staff anticipates no significant fiscal impact from this action, although the ability to promptly procure certain services could result in savings due to the decreased lead time between approval and project delivery and the adoption of more items by resolution instead of ordinance, which would result in a savings in the city's publication cost. I pause for any questions?
And Larry, are we, is this addressing K3 and K4? Is this kind of a combination, right?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so, and what, what is the actual time savings? Maybe you can share that with council. Meaning on a project, let's say, a project that's $50,000.
Forty-five to 50 days.
Forty-five days.
Okay. All right. All right. So, I just want to make sure we knew that. Okay, all right. Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll take K3 first and I'll entertain an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1397.03.09. An ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending section 3.04.040, purchases in general bids of chapter 3.04 procurement code of title 13 Revenue and Finance of the City of Casa Grande Municipal Code pertaining to the approval of certain purchases, establishing the severability of various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1397.03.09 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, item K4, we've already discussed. So can I get an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number 3285. An ordinance approving the city's FY 2021/22 Capital Improvement Plan, authorizing the approval of contracts in excess of 50,000 for projects on the capital improvement plans to be done by resolution, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3285 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right. Hard lifting is over. So let's start with, we got reports, that's all we have left, right, Larry? All right. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. So I'm going to start to my immediate right and start with you, Bob.
Only one thing. At your request, I attended.
Thank you for that, too, by the way.
You're welcome. The Tessa groundbreaking last week. Also, Councilman Herman was out there. It was very interesting to see their project and see their progress. They, the groundbreaking was interesting. They did issue commemorative shovels. It's chrome plated, engraved, and.
Stick that in our trophy case.
Appropriate for a very conspicuous and prominent display. And the interesting thing, they didn't have a shovel any dirt, but instead we saved the shovel and were all asked to say, gentlemen, start your engines, to a group of earth movers. So it was, it was very interesting. Mayor, your shovel.
Awesome. Hold it up for the camera.
It looks like it's chromed, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's very nice.
Yeah, it's nice.
Very cool. Let's find a spot for that.
Yeah.
Who we got a spot for, Larry?
Preferably not.
All right. Well, thank you both for going. Appreciate that. All right, Mr. Powell.
Hi.
Reports?
No, I don't have anything important to say today. I think this went very nice tonight. I did go see our finance director this afternoon, or this morning, and I've worked on her and worked on her and worked on her, and I couldn't get her to move an inch. So when I left the room, everybody was laughing at me, and there weren't any.
Probably because you were telling a joke.
No, well, I told her some stories, too, trying to soften it up a little bit, but.
All right. Lisa?
Well, I've met with, there was a transit subcommittee meeting this week or last week, so that was really interesting. They're moving along. You probably remember some of the discussions that they had and some of the recommendations they're going to be bringing to the council. It's not going away, Dick. I hope you're okay with that. But so they, it was interesting. Of course, we had staff, we had some of the planning and zoning commission members on the committee, myself, Wilson and Company were, is the company that's kind of spearheading the study and everything. So I think they're looking, Larry, to come to a study session in August. And I think you'll be happy to see that they kind of reevaluated. They didn't do away with everything we've done, all the studies we've done in the past, but we're looking at some other options with recommendations and to make sure that we utilize the funding that's out there and that we're not giving it away. So I was happy to see they're looking at more of a micro-transit system, recommending that instead of a fixed route, which might be something, because I know there were some concerns with council, so.
Micro sounds better, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's a five-year plan, so of course, starting small and then expanding over a five-year period. So I'm hoping that'll come before the council in August is what they're looking at. And then, of course, on a regular basis, you know, I meet with the Faith Alliance Pastor, Juan Hughes is here on behalf of the Faith Alliance. We appreciate you coming tonight, as well as all the other pastors saying the prayers. And then the homeless coalition. And, you know, I just wanted to point out, because so many times people, if you're not involved in some of these organizations, you know, of course, there's criticism that there's not enough happening in the homeless community or, you know, you know, the faith community or whatever, but there's so much that this group is doing. And you'll see it on social media that there's not enough, but I sit in on these meetings and the mayor, you're always there, too. And there's, there's so much that's happening. I mean, you know, over the years, nothing happens overnight and, you know, there's, you know, with homeless, you know, we have the Resource Center, we have showers now, we have an eviction prevention program, Cast Grand PD and chief, I just, I say it every week or every meeting, you know, Deputy Chief Leos has done a fantastic job. I mean, he has the passion of trying to make a difference and bring agencies and the community together, and he's not letting up. I mean, he's very passionate and he's, you know, pushing the faith community to see what they can do to get involved. He's working on the eviction prevention. You know, we're working on the overnight shelter. It is not going away. We're moving closer. We had a Faith Alliance meeting last week where there was probably about 25 pastors from all over and people are, it's getting closer. And so we're, you know, we're doing a homeless count on September 17th, and this time we are going to have Sun Life come out and, you know, we did, the Resource Center had the COVID vaccinations, and we only had about 18 to 20 homeless come to get vaccinated, but we're going to take the nurse practitioners out with us while we do the homeless count so we can, because people have told us you need to go out, like Deputy Chief Leos keeps reminding us, we need to go out to where the homeless are. And so Sun Life did agree that they're going to try to work with us to bring people out on September 17th. So there's criticism and I wish things can happen, you know, in a day, but I'm just really proud of what these groups, and if you guys ever want to sit in on one of those meetings, they're all online, I mean, they're all telephonic, so you're more than welcome to sit in to see all the great things that are happening. So I just wanted to bring it up again. So that's about it.
Thank you, Lisa. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give some thanks to the Parks Department. We had a bunch of trees blown down during all of the storms and they expeditiously got the roads cleared and everything cleaned up. So that was good. And another, I own apology to the Parks Department because I thanked Mr. Clarence Edwards from Public Works Department for putting up the pedestals and stuff at the Garden of Sunshine. And I was gently reminded that the younger, better-looking brother, Mike Edwards, who's in the Parks Division, and his crew was in fact responsible for that. So that was my mistake and I apologize to those, to those guys. And you can guess who told me he was younger and better-looking, but anyway. But Mr. Clarence Edwards from Public Works helps us with our, with our day of shredding, so we get help from all the Edwards brothers in the city at the youth commission, so that's exciting. Speaking of that, we're having our annual retreat on August 7th, and I was asked to invite formerly Mr. Mayor and Mr. Larry Rains, if you'd like to join us for lunch on Saturday, August 7th, let me know. Just take a look right now, just to talk to the future leaders and tell them a bit about our city. And that's all I have.
I think it's around lunchtime.
Yes.
Okay. Donna?
Well, you know, I just wanted to mention, Matt had talked about the storms and we really had a lot of trees and stuff down and hats off to city staff. And I know that, you know, Larry's office got some calls and stuff on that, too. To Lisa's point, I had the opportunity to meet with one of our interns out of the PIO office, Nora Ortiz, and I think this is her last week, and she's doing a story on homelessness and the resources that we have. And it was really encouraging to have that conversation with her. She really has done her homework and so, great job to the PIO department. I'm sure she's learned a lot. But the other side of that is that's one of the things that we said we wanted to have an opportunity for young people to learn about our city, and we started that internship program and it just tells the quality of work, that they're not just shuffling papers or answering phones, they're really doing meaningful work. So it's kind of a two-for-one. And then also for my July birthday buddy, happy birthday to the mayor coming up. That's it.
All right. Jeff?
Well, I had the pleasure last week of attending a reception for our new teachers in the district and was very impressed with the enthusiasm. I saw about 12 of our former students that have gone through Bilago and Cactus there, including our city manager's daughter, who's going to be a first-grade teacher at Sora. We're excited. She's excited. But just a reminder, first day of school is on July 26th. We're not quite back to normal, but we're headed that direction. So be careful out there as you see students and parents getting their students to school that first day, especially the kindergartners.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Well, and just a big thank you to my fellow council members. I know you all have been very busy and thank you for everything you do in the community and your homeless task force and, you know, even our volunteer commissions and all that. I know you all volunteer for that. And I just want to remind everybody that we are seeing an uptick in COVID-related illnesses. In fact, in the state of Arizona, I think the last four days have had over 1,000, which is a big increase. Now, I haven't seen that in Pinal County. Our numbers are still fairly low, so those numbers are probably coming out of Maricopa, but they're still there and it still means that the variant is there. And we're not any better protected because only half or less of our population in 85122 has been vaccinated. So if you have not been vaccinated, I encourage you to get vaccinated. Talk to your doctor. Don't look on social media. Talk to your doctor and ask your doctor about getting vaccinated. That's, he or she are the best educated to give you a real answer, an educated answer. So please, please do that. And I will tell you that of all the current cases, between 92 and 97% of all the new cases are people who are not vaccinated. So that should give you some indication as to what kind of protection you might have if you were vaccinated. Also, just an update on single-family building permits. Through the month of June, we are at 985 total new home building permits. That's 148% increase over last year, and we were on fire last year. So it's unbelievable, the numbers. We're forecasting now about 2,000 by the end of the year. And that's just a huge number. We haven't seen some of those numbers really since '04, '05. So hang on for the ride, because there's a lot of stuff coming down the pike. Also, remind everybody that the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission is seeking input from our public. And the first opportunity really is this Friday in Pinal County. You can go into Florence, to the historic courthouse, or in Maricopa to their public library, both these locations, and then also Superior, if you want to go up to Superior. All of them are at 5 o'clock this Friday, and those are, those are for input from the Maricopa, or excuse me, Pinal County residents. So this is, this as the census rolls out, I think August 16th, we're looking forward to see the actual numbers by city. And once those numbers come out, and those will obviously be used for the redistricting, and they want, they want input between now and then to try and understand what the, you know, what our citizens want in terms of how your, your House district is set up, how the Senate district is set up, you know, even your, even the federal districts and how they're set up. So this is an opportunity for the community to give their input on a very important subject that will affect us for the next 10 years. Also, the city is looking for sponsors for the soccer sponsorships. City has taken over the sponsor, or the soccer activities from the Boys and Girls Club, and they are, they have this out, the sponsor deadline is July 30th, which is next Friday. So please try and get your sponsorships in. If you want to sponsor a youth team, then please talk to the Community Rec Center about it and they can help you out. And I think that's probably about all I've got. We do, we are going to, we are going to host the Arizona Department of Transportation Board Meeting, but that's not until, not until October 15th, so I'll give you more information as that gets closer, because we will have a reception for the, for the board and you all will be invited to attend that reception. So just wanted to kind of give you a heads up, so you might want to put it on your calendar. Oh, and then the most important thing, the Chambers Biz Outlook Luncheon, which I am speaking at, is coming up in August, August 20th from 11 to 1. If you're interested in getting, purchasing a ticket, please contact the Chamber Office. So you'll hear some inspiring speech from me on August 20th from 11 to 1. And it will be at the property, so it will be in person. And that's all I have. Anybody else have any last-minute comments or questions or Larry, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, if any of the council is interested in attending the business outlook, if they can contact Deborah and let her know. She's handling the reservations for the city.
And I freed up two seats, Larry.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right, then we'll stand adjourned for tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming.